All right, we'll call the special meeting of the city council to the order. Before we get started, just to explain to our guests, Boy Scouts, what's happening. It's a little bit unusual for us tonight. Normally, we have a regular meetings and those regular meetings have a particular order to the agenda and they start at seven o'clock. Sometimes, too often, actually lately, we've had to have special meetings and we start them at six o'clock. And since our agenda sometimes run really late, some of us work during the day. We're not able to eat before we get here, so we have dinner at five thirty. So you get the pleasure, you had the pleasure tonight of seeing government eat in front of you. I apologize to you for if I, if I made you hungry, I'm sorry. And tonight's an unusual night, even in an, in, in unusual time where we're going to start with a regular special meeting. And the reason for that is that we have to adopt our calendar for when we're going to meet during the year. And we need that calendar before we can have our regular meeting, which is the third meeting. So we have a very short meeting for the, the special meeting. And then we're going to have a work study and we have some things to do and work study on that. So because of all these different meetings and whatever, our, our pledge of allegiance has been moved to the very first of the first meeting, which is right now. So if you would all join us in the pledge of allegiance, I think it's going to be led by Lorenzo. We're happy to have you and the rest of your troop with us. So hope you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for leading us in the pledge. Just so that everyone knows, there is a purpose to all of this. The Boy Scouts are here with their leader Jeff, who has taken them today to the state legislature. And then after they saw the workings of the state legislature, they get to come here and see the workings of the local government, the city council. So that they can qualify for, is it a badge? So hopefully you guys will get something out of the day you've had and you learn something about, about how our government functions. And you, you will get a badge out of it. So welcome, welcome to the meeting.
Citizenship in the community?
Yes.
And nation.
Okay, so the item, the item for us in the special meeting, it's our meeting schedules. Is there any discussion on the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five?
Questions?
Question?
Uh, the August meeting is, I think, set during the league conference?
Right, we'll move that, we'll move that meeting to, will just be the first Wednesdays, which is already in the schedule.
Okay, so we're going to do it on the sixth, like a calendar for August sixth?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, great, okay.
First Wednesday.
Okay, perfect.
Any other discussion or questions? Is there a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five calendar?
Somewhat.
It's your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, a calendar is adopted and I think that's the only item we have for the special meeting. We have no need for an executive session in this meeting. Say was your motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Now we'll call the order, the work study session. The item of business is a presentation by staff on infrastructure improvements for Camelback and Litchfield roads. Mr. Williams, you have your report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One second while I pull it up, sir. Mayor Council, good evening. Good to see you. And thank you to our scouts for as well for being here. We do appreciate you guys. As a very important meeting, thank you guys for everything you do and hope you enjoy this meeting. Some of them, of course, will be exciting more than other parts. Our presentation you're going to see is about infrastructure, things like intersections, roads, so on and so forth. So you guys, hopefully you'll find something that interesting as we, as we put the presentation. One second. No problem. While we're doing that, I would like to guys, invite you guys to come visit City Hall. Please, people put a group together or come individually, please come check it out. We welcome you to come see what City Hall does, how it operates, what, what we do every day. So we do a lot of things that a lot of people don't realize involves local government. And in my opinion, local government affects people's lives the most. Because we do things like maintaining the parks, the streets, the roads that you drive on every day. And of course, police and fire, et cetera. So again, you guys are always welcome.
Having troubles, I'm happy to send it over there.
No problem.
Having technical difficulties?
Yes, sir.
Do we have when we cite the scout open scout pledge?
I don't know exactly what's going on.
Yeah.
You may need something, dude. Maybe you can describe how Camelback Road is and we'll have a place to start with. Does that work?
How old were you scout?
I was nine. Were you?
I was. I think Paul was.
Sure, Paul was.
I was scout master for ninety-nine and a scout in ninety-nine.
I had enough mayor badges to be an Eagle, but not enough.
You didn't have an IT mayor badge, did you?
No, we didn't have that back then either.
It was a typing badge.
I worked with twenty-one boys that became Eagle.
There we go.
Yeah, pretty cool. I remember mine.
Mayor Council, thank you for bearing with us there. So as we do this presentation, like you will see, we're going to pivot somewhat. I'm going to talk to you guys about road infrastructure projects and after I get through my portion, Paige will talk to you about some of the finance side. So again, tonight's presentation is about road infrastructure projects. We're going to talk about infrastructure in several phases, as you'll see, phase one, two, and three. As you see, phase one is twenty-six, twenty-seven. Phase two is by twenty-nine and phase three is by twenty-thirty-one. Some of these timelines will run concurrently, just because the time it takes to plan projects, implement them, et cetera. You'll see at the bottom there, the cost estimation for these total projects is seventeen million dollars. That includes several contributions from several different things. One of those, of course, is the three and a half million dollars we received from Aracopa County some years ago for Camelback Road. Just so council's awareness, that three and a half million is only for the portion west of Litchfield Road. That's important to understand. And also, there's, of course, there's the Sun Health reimbursements that are required per the DA and there's potential grant funds as well. And of course, for our audience, you're looking there at the intersection of Camelback and Litchfield Road. Next slide. Phase one, first of all, is the Brenton Avenue Roundabout. Of course, that is the roundabout that's the main access for the Hilltop, for the Augur Freya property, for the library and for the Hilltop itself. Currently, there is no intersection there today. Staff estimates the Brenton Avenue Roundabout at two million dollars. And there is also an anticipated contribution there from Augur Freya School District of five hundred thousand from their adjacent ways funds. But that would be after July one of twenty-six because of budget cycles. The next one listed is the Litchfield, Missouri signal, that is one million dollars. So those two go together because we know that when Augur Freya opens, when the library opens, it's going to warrant a red light at that location. Today, it's very close and when you open either of those buildings, it's going to go over a warrant. For those of us in the audience, what a warrant study is, you can't just go out and build a red light. A warrant study is something that shows if you need a red light or not, there's certain measurements that have to be taken to show if it's warranted or not. So that's what we say when we mean warrants signal, is that there's enough numbers, there's enough traffic there that generates a signal. Also in phase one is proposed Litchfield Road Underpass, that's a million dollars. Of course, it also be near Augur Freya site and the Hilltop site. The Sun Health Camelback Road Roundabout, two million dollars. Council will remember on that one that Sun Health is obligated to pay for the northern half of that roundabout. However, that's at the speed, at the speed of their development. There is no hard timeline in the DA for that. We expect the plans for that shortly to be submitted to the city. But again, there is no timeline, it has to be built. There's a timeline that plans have to be submitted. So we may very well end up building, uh, building that roundabout now at Sun Health reimbursement. That all depends on the speed of the development. Also, as you know, the city has contractual deadlines to have some of these projects completed by August of twenty-six, such as the Brenton Avenue Roundabout. That's the primary access for the Hilltop. And again, there's retribut, there's reimbursements, contributions from outside agents. This is the Brenton Avenue Roundabout. As you see, it is there at two million dollar estimated cost. So of course, it's the roundabout itself. It is the southern entrance into Sunset Terrace, which has that nice pretty entrance now with a guard shack today. You'll also see the medians going north and going south, if you can see it, the green areas there in the medians, palm trees. Because of course, we want this to look like Litchfield Park, like you see the normal medians of Litchfield, you have the pretty palm trees. It looks like it belongs. That's part of that design as well. The yellow lines there on the south side, just south or to the left of the palm trees are buses. Because that's the bus turn in there, the south side there, the left side of Augur Freya there is the bus entrance for the site. So those yellow lines you see are buses where they'll make a left-hand turn there to go into the campus. Again, this will be looking north and, or north and south. This is the Missouri traffic signal. Again, this is at Missouri and Litchfield Road. So we estimate one million dollars for this one. This one is also in the, is in the Sun Health obligations to pay for the western half, if it's a roundabout or it's a red light. But again, it's dependent upon the speed of development. Sun Health may not need this. They may need it a year from now, they may need it ten years from now, right? But I would tell you that you don't have, you don't have that luxury. Because again, it's going to warrant the signal when Augur Freya opens or when library opens. Um, as I've told you, I, I turn left here every morning. It's, it's a dangerous place to turn out, if you're trying to make that left-hand turn. This intersection is also very interesting in that different organizations own parts of this road, if that makes sense. So on the Missouri side, which is the south side, from the center line north belongs to county. From the center line south, it belongs to Litchfield Park. On Litchfield Road, Litchfield Road from the traffic light there north is in the city of Glendale. However, the Sun Health property there on the north side runs much further north. The property, the city limits do this, basically, if that makes sense. So that's important to understand, is that again, and also there's the strip annex. So staff has talked to McDot and the actual part of the red light, the McDot area doesn't go all the way up to the signal. So it'd be a question of the city in Glendale more than it would be the city in McDot, if that makes sense. But again, all that can be figured out. But again, Missouri traffic signal, one million estimated cost. Yes, sir.
Did you say that city limits on the top side of the road extend, maybe with that twenty-five mile an hour yellow triangle?
So the Sun Health property there, sir, is in the city, much further to the north. But the road there north of the signal, Litchfield Road itself, belongs to Glendale, north of the red light.
How much further does it go? Do you have any idea?
As far as the Sun Health property?
Yeah, there's Sun Health and the city, the city limits and Sun Health, but that's the same, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So just south of that church, if you know where the church is, heading north on Litchfield Road? Yes, sir. So it's very interesting in that the property, of course, is city, but the road is actually Glendale. And also per the Sun Health DA, Sun Health is obligated to build a pathway there along their property and also to continue the median. Even though, because the Sun Health property, again, is in Litchfield Park, but the road north of the red light is in Glendale. Complicated. Other questions on this signal? Next slide, please.
So Matthew, on that, north of the light, the entirety of the, of the north and south of Litchfield Road is in Glendale?
In the city of Glendale, yes, sir.
But the east, the, the side, anything on the side to the west of the street is Litchfield.
Right.
None of the road itself is.
Well, the south side of the intersection would be ours, sir.
Correct.
I would tell you, in my opinion, sir, there's a deal to be made with Glendale on this line. Uh, this one is the Litchfield Road Underpass. Mayor Council, you may remember in a pre, in a previous meeting, we had it further south. Staff has moved it north to line up more with the buildings there, as you see. It's closer to the roundabout. And again, this is the underpass to go under Litchfield Road. Also, if you can believe it, there's so much elevation drop that it wouldn't be as much for the ADA to come out of the underpass as you would think it would be. Because there's so much drop as far as where it comes out, it, it's, it's complicated. But again, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Would the underpass not be better off being over to the corner of the properties, so the Sun Health people can use it to get to prized?
That's where it started.
Correct.
Everybody criticized that and said it would be better to be up by the roundabout because we don't want kids running across the roundabout.
Coming on Sunset Terrace.
Right. For purposes, tonight, it doesn't matter where it's located. We can deal with that in the future.
Correct. Next slide, please. Next up is the Sun Health Camelback Road Roundabout. This is very conceptual, obviously. It's in the process of being designed currently on the northern half by Sun Health. So this one is interesting in that for the Sun Health DA, Sun Health is required to design the northern half of the road and the northern half of the roundabout. Where the city is required, of course, to build the southern half and the southern half of the roundabout. But again, it depends on Sun Health needs it, right? Depends on the speed of their development. If Sun Health doesn't need it now, again, the city may end up going to build this intersection now and Sun Health reimbursing us later for their half of this project. As you'll see, if, for those of you that don't know, this roundabout will be, it's what's the construction entrance of Sun Health today. The Litchfield gates from Litchfield Greens would be to the left of the roundabout. And also Jackie Robinson Field would be further to the left as well. The asphalt you see there on the northern side there, that's the parking lot for the doctor's office of Sun Health today.
Would really be a three-way roundabout.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Just to make sure that everybody, we get the correct impression of what's going on with Sun Health. Uh, the city manager and I met with Joe LaRue, who's the president of Sun Health, is that last week, week before last week, I guess. And his statement to us was that the Sun Health has the funds and, and the board will be presented with the question of committing those funds to build these improvements along Camelback as soon as the improvements are designed. Once they can get a cost estimate for the improvements, then it sounded like their intention was to move forward. Because if they don't get the improvements in on Camelback Road, it's going to impact the ability to develop that product. What that means to us is that it doesn't make any sense to do half of the road and not the other half. So that the, our, our financial obligations are going to start running in, in somewhat without our control because it's going to be driven by how quickly Sun Health wants to put this roundabout ahead. So it'll be part of negotiations with them over a variety of topics. But the appearance now is that they're committed to getting this done sooner rather than later.
That, that is correct.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Has it been determined that's going to be two lanes in each direction?
Yes. Two lanes and potentially a fifth turny lane or median or whatever in the middle.
How is that determined? There was, isn't that on the agenda tonight for us to talk about?
Not, the number of lanes is not on.
Mr. Vice Mayor, there was discussions with the city of Goodyear several years ago about that, probably twenty-twenty-one. That, that, you know, Goodyear is actually going to be rebuilding their section of Camelback. And per the agreement, it actually bottlenecked down at city limits.
Right.
They were going to build a six lane, but one of those cities backed out of that. So now it's going to be a four lane in Goodyear and then it bottlenecked down at our city limits. And of course, our city limits going this way are at, um, hundred, at one hundred and forty-sixth.
Matthew, it's still six.
It is still six in Goodyear, okay, all right.
Yeah, it's like, oh. It'll, it'll go down to four, uh, at, uh, not quite Cerebral Rings. In Goodyear? In Goodyear, within Goodyear, as it goes toward Cerebral, we've got down to four. So it sticks from the freeway to? Be six from our city limits to about rings, down to four, rings to Cerebral and then whatever, A H O S, going to be kind of Cerebral to Real Green. And the lo, the location of the roundabout, is that definite? Because it seems like it'd make most sense to line up Village Parkway or the gate coming out of the greens is an alternate or a park is an alternate or something?
There's all kinds of discussions when, from all those locations. City managers, I guess, it's proven, most of them, so go ahead and explain that. Fun time that's had with that.
That, that is a good question. We've talked that before by that being the primary interest for the Sun Health development. But it previously was approved at this location, is that is the location for Sun Health, for the loop road that Sun Health is going to build here versus the, across from Jackie Robinson. You'll actually see, we're, we're recommending the signal at Village Parkway that will be later in this presentation. Just, councilman, clear.
So the cost estimate is the same as the Britain? It's, it's one less exit and it's going to be done by a private vendor versus a government vendor? Shouldn't we see a, be it potentially done by a different vendor than what the government, what we have to choose as the city of Litchfield? Potential cost savings?
Maybe a potential, but for purpose of planning, we're just going to use the estimates we have on what it will cost to build it. If we can save money on it, we're going to do that.
That's correct. Mayor Council, too, a few things that you're looking at there, if you can see them. Um, that beige line you see there on the south side is a pathway. Because if you know there, there is no pathway there today, that pathway cost is not included in this two million. I'll cover that in a minute. Let's wonder, so you see what you're looking at. But again, you've got the road itself, the two million is for the roundabout itself. That doesn't include the medians. It doesn't include that pathway. The black line you see there just south of the green area is the existing wall today. And just to kind of get your bearings is what you're looking at. And again, I'll, I'll cover more of the improvements in upcoming slides. Next slide, please. Phase two. The Litchfield Road have street improvements, pathways and curves, half a million dollars. Camelback Road West, when we say west, we mean west of Litchfield Road. There's the south half improvements and the pathway, uh, four million dollars. Again, that's three and a half million we got from county for that portion. And Camelback Road East, pathway and lighting, three point five million dollars. Again, there's the contribution from county at the bottom and Sun Health obligations. These are the recommended improvements on Litchfield Road. If you can see there, you see some of the, you can see, it's hard to see because it blends in with the desert. But there's a pathway there on the western side or the, the upper side there of Litchfield Road. So there's also some medians in there, it's more on the north side, that, that don't show in this picture. And one thing you may notice there, also required in Sun Health DA is that eventually is that we, what, what staff likes to call Panda Denny. The eastern exit from Sun Health property into Litchfield Road, the existing one you see today is there on the right-hand side. It will be relocating there just to the left. So it lines up just north of Panda Express. That naturally, there's issues there. It's government, can never be that simple. There's multiple utilities and things that will have to be moved for that to be done, but that's a different conversation. Again, this, for this cost, we're talking again about a pathway, curves, et cetera. And also, there is a right-hand turn lane to be built there on the counter.
And just before we go too far, I understand this is, this is number one, the work study, so there's nothing, there's nothing going to be authorized or approved tonight.
Correct.
Uh, this is a fifty thousand foot level with the concept of what needs to be done on these roads.
Right.
The main reason for us looking at it tonight is we have to, we need to look at all these together and what the cost of everything is, so we can figure out how we're going to pay for it. So that's, that is more of a discussion than exactly where any particular feature is.
Correct.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Your, your map cutoff doesn't show that needed right turn lane northbound on the Shiloh Road. Is that not going to be anywhere in the, just planning process, since we're already, we're kind of doing a bunch of stuff around there?
We, we certainly could, Mr. Vice Mayor. No, sir, it wasn't included in these numbers, but we certainly could. For those of you that may not remember what the Vice Mayor is talking about, in previous years, we've discussed about putting a right-hand turn lane at the intersection of Litchfield and Camelback heading northbound. Because currently, there isn't one now. Sometimes traffic backs up in that right-hand lane, is what he's speaking about.
Probably, it's a topic for another work study, a separate works.
So I'm going to try to confuse you on this as much as possible. The upper slide, or the upper section of the road is at the western boundary of the city. That road you see connecting into it, that's Jackie Robinson Baseball Field. If you look there, you can see the very corner of Jackie Robinson, that's Village Parkway. You'll see in a later slide, we're recommending a red light Jackie Robinson. You could see the median there, et cetera. The next slide, again, the next portion is the roundabout that you've already seen. Again, you see the median there with the palm trees. The reason we included this one on this slide is that median is in this number of four million. The roundabout was in the previous slide in phase one, where this actual median work would be in phase two. And then further to the bottom, where you see what we call Camelback Road, or closer to at Mary's House right there. Again, you see, you see the median there, et cetera. Again, that's four million dollars there, but again, three and a half million of that comes from county funds.
Another, another part that's not in this yet at this point is, we don't know, we, we don't really have enough engineering data yet to know whether we can lower the, lower Camelback Road a little bit in that area, just to the west of Litchfield Road. Lowering it will help with some of the problems we have with noise. So that's something that's got to be investigated as we get through the engineering work on, on this intersection to see exactly what is underneath that road, where, where it's at and how far, how deep it, how deep it is.
That, that's a hundred percent correct. These are all conceptual. This is what the staff has done, that's all where we have. None of this has been designed and engineered yet.
Councilman?
Um, so my understanding, excuse me, am I understanding you correctly that we'll do the roundabout, the circle? And then come back in the next phase and do the medians leading up to and beyond the circle?
We try to divide the projects up in phases of need. The roundabout is needed more than the median, but to your point, it would certainly make more sense to build the medians while you're out there building a roundabout.
Right.
It, it's just money like anything else.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. This top slide doesn't go up to city limits. And if I remember right, that road's already all built out to city limits and it's six lanes, is it not?
As far as Camelback, sir?
Yes. Yeah, I, I see a head nodding, yes. City limits end at the subdivision, you kind of see it at the north top left there, that where that kind of white color gate is. That's where the city limits are at, so they, they wind it to six lanes at that. It don't, it doesn't end at the Bullard Wash?
It lives, it ends at the desert, sure. The end of the Sun Health property right there at Palm Valley, that's the border on the northern side.
We have the south curb line of Camelback, so it comes down and it jogs over and so it might be the south curb line all the way to Bullard Wash. So most of the houses and the villages that back at the Camelback, back up to a Goodyear Road? Yes.
That's correct.
We have a little bit of the shoulder on the south side, the Goodyear has everything worth that we need. And they've constructed that to six lanes.
Other questions on this slide? This is Camelback Road East, of course, going east from Litchfield Road. So several things this includes, obviously, as you see, is more palm trees there and the pathway there are none there today. So improving that median. It would also include rebuilding the intersection of Dyser and Camelback. It's in pretty rough shape now, so as you see, replacing all asphalt. Unfortunately, it's past the point of just cracked seal pathway. Again, there's no pathway there currently along Camelback, so that would include building a pathway there on the south side. Lighting and media improvements, it will need some street lights. We estimate this portion at three and a half million dollars. We're also, you may remember, part of the Camelback Park project for building the wall was having the contractor build a right turn lane onto South Dyser Road while he's out there. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming tonight.
Good night, guys.
If you're really into traffic engineering, you're, you're welcome to go.
Welcome to stay as long as you like.
You, you've met your mayor badges before. The mayor, the mayor will sign off on that.
Thank you. Houses and the villages.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, if, if long as we build four, maybe a median, at least they're going to have to nick it down at the very end. And they already have, I mean, it doesn't count, right? So hopefully, once we get it, once we get our, our situation set, make that transition more permanent, so that it's not very quick now.
Mayor Council, continuing. Phase three. The Village Parkway traffic signal, million dollars. A roundabout or a signal done away though, we don't know yet, but one of the two. If it's a roundabout, you can plan for about two million. If it's a signal, about one million. As you say, their signal will be a price of one million dollars. Next slide, please. This is a signal at Village. This one is interesting in that some of the infrastructure is already there today. There is a left-hand turn lane into Village Parkway. There is also a right-hand turn lane into Village Parkway, so some of this is done. This right, today would be a three-legged intersection. If it's eventually an access point into the Sun Health property, it would be a four-legged intersection. I'm currently on Sun Health plan. Currently on Sun Health plans, this intersection does not access the Sun Health property, but it certainly could. It, it would make sense to do that, in my opinion, but in current plans, it doesn't call for that. And again, right there is Jackie Robinson Baseball Field and, and the parking lot, et cetera. Again, we don't know if it will need a roundabout or a signal, but Villanueva, I get a request for this intersection probably monthly. For people trying to turn left at Villanueva, they would like to see a red light here or roundabout here. Today, of course, it's just, it's a, it's a break in the curb and you can turn left. Same thing here, again, you see the palm trees in the median, and you see how the roundabout would work. It will be interesting with this property to sit, with this project, if and when that, what a question property develops, as far as how it affects this intersection. And that's all on my end, so, as you see, Mayor and Councilor, that's a lot of infrastructure projects, the mayor said that's very much high level. But these are things we need to start planning for. We've been planning for development a long time, and the development's here. Now it's just a matter of planning the infrastructure and of course, how do you pay for it? And with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Paige. Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And as Matthew said, we have to look at different ways we can fund these projects. So I put together a few options of pay-as-you-go, um, bonds, and then look at some options with our, um, TPT programs. The pay-as-you-go is historically how the city has paid for capital infrastructure projects. Essentially, we use our one-time revenues and our fund balance to pay for projects as we have the funds available. The benefits of that is obviously we wouldn't need to issue any debt, there wouldn't be any debt payments. Um, but the, the downside, and probably the biggest downside of, of going this route, is it will take at least ten years or longer to, to complete these projects, as the development around us is moving much faster than that. Just doing a little online research, the average cost of construction increases every year over year is about three point seven percent. So over time, that could cost an additional two million. And the traffic congestion will get worse with the new development, and then that will also prolong other city capital improvement projects. If we're dedicating the money that we have available to go towards these specific projects. As I mentioned, it would take at least ten years, so we're, we're projecting out to possibly summer of twenty thirty-five to finish, um, the final project. Our cash flow, if we use a pay-as-you-go summary. If you just go straight to the bottom line, our ending fund balance, you can see we, we maintain our healthy fund balance. But the money that we contribute to the projects is, is lower, that's, I wish I had a pointer. It's that road improvements projects, third from the bottom. The years that we have, um, a larger amount dedicated towards these, that's because we have, um, money from Maricopa County. Other than that, we will dedicate between about one point two to one million a year, and then that will continue on through twenty thirty-five. Um, something else to keep in mind as we're talking about these, there's, this, these projects haven't been committed to by council, but they are projects that are being discussed such as parking garages, related to square, just other city capital, um, road maintenance, and then the public works facility. Also, I want to point out, I have, um, added in here sales of Litchfield Square parcels. If those don't sell in the future, um, this would decrease our fund balance by about three million.
Councilwoman James.
Are the, uh, hard funds included here?
And, yes, I have included using hard funds for the capital, for these projects. So i- it's good that we can use that money, but then we would have to use the general fund for road maintenance that hurt typically pays for. Our annual expenditure limit estimate, as, uh, we all know, the state calculates our annual expenditure limit. We're not allowed to spend over that, as this pay-as-you-go, we would be well under our expenditure limit every year, by between ten and twelve million. Are there any questions on pay-as-you-go before I go into the bonds? I, I reached out to our bond consultant and they got us some numbers yesterday. So if we looked at a twelve point three million dollar bond with a ten-year term, interest right now is about three point seven five percent, and the average annual payment is one point five million. Um, the benefits to that is we will receive the cash upfront. And we can complete these projects by about twenty thirty-one, and city operating revenues can cover this one point five million dollar payment. We budget every year for our revenues to exceed expenses by about two million. So that's where this one point five million would be paid from, so that would cut down on our revenues over expenditures, and budget-wise, it would only be about half a million over. Actual revenues over expenses usually end up being about three million, but we do lean on the side of caution when we're budgeting for that. Um, the cons of issuing bonds are the interest cost will be about two point seven million. We have the bond issuance cost, I don't have a number for that, I apologize for you tonight, but it's a couple hundred thousand. And and that third bullet shouldn't have been there, apologize. The timeline on this, if we issue bonds, it, it falls into line, it falls in line with the timeline that Matthew spoke about. We could start, um, this summer, fall of twenty-five, and be complete in about the summer of twenty thirty-one. Here is the bond debt service payment schedule. And as you see, the average payment is just over one point five, um, each year. Total interest costs are two point seven million. And this will change based on market conditions, so if we get to the point where we do want to issue bonds, these numbers, um, will definitely change. Our cash flow, if we consider the bond. You can see the biggest impact rate here will be this third line from the top, our net, our revenues over expenditure, because I included this new debt service payment in our operating expenses. So you can see in twenty-six, um, net is just nine hundred thousand, three ninety the next year, five seventy, nine hundred. So under a million dollars every year. However, we have a significant fund balance, so our, our revenues over expenditures, even if it is less than a million, will still have a nice ending fund balance. Our expenditure limit, um, under this scenario, if, if you issue bond, you can exclude every item that you pay for with bond proceeds. So all of those projects we discussed would be excluded from our expenditure limit. We can also exclude our debt payment. So we'll be greatly underneath our expenditure limit, so if we need to spend money on those other projects that I mentioned earlier, such as parking, public works facility, we'll have that expenditure limit capacity. Um, our third option is to look at our transaction privilege tax. There is state, current state legislation that will, may impact our transaction privilege tax revenues. Um, we do need further discussion on this, and since it is legislation and some legal items, um, we would like to, to discuss this further later on in executive session. And that concludes this section of the presentation.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Paige, if I, I was teeny tiny print and I was squinting. But I think what I saw up there was the revenue, your projection for revenues for next year and the year after is less than this year. Why, why are you projecting revenues to go down? At sixteen-five now, over sixteen-one and sixteen-three?
The, the biggest swing is the, um, the income tax reduction that the state passed last year or the year before. So we had an uptick, and now we're going to start to see that decrease, so that's a decrease in.
That's the new flat tax, that's starting to hit. And have you somehow figured in there maybe a sales tax on two, get also, or is that not in there?
That's, um, will be in that later presentation.
It's not included in these numbers.
No, that's, this assumes that we keep the.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Lot of questions.
Well, do you want to ask anything now, or do you want to hold your questions till there? All right. Thank you. Does this complete your presentation on this part of it?
This goes, Mayor Council, thank you.
This is intended to get, you know, to get started, getting everybody up to the same, up to speed basically on these significant capital improvements that are gonna be required from us because of development that either has already started or that will be happening shortly. And, uh, you know, that, that, kind of the, uh, intersection of the, the needs and the funding, so it gives us something, it gives you something you can muddle on. With that, I don't think there's anything else for us to do in this work-study session, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some would.
Second? Hold up a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right, so we'll take a sip to our regular agenda. May be on the council need a, maybe for a break, or you're ready to go right into, into work. Follow the order, the regular session of city council, regular agenda. We've already had a pledge of allegiance, so we'll start with, uh, councilman reports. Who would like to start?
Sure, why not? Um, the, I, I can't remember if our charrette meeting was part of last month's. But I attended the charrette meeting. Kudos, you did a really nice job with that. I, I love your sense of humor, it's disarming and makes people friendly, so, very nice. Um, I thought we got a lot of great feedback. My only comments would be that, um, I would really like to have seen a younger population give us their, their input. Um, but that's the generation who have kids and, you know, sports, so it's kind of hard for them to do stuff, I get that. Um, I wondered whether or not it might be wise to pull a group of, um, that age at demographic together and just do a quick, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It's a research focus group, thank you. My marketing degree out the window. Uh, anyhow, I wondered if that might be of, of value to at least say we have their input. But, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Claire. Councilwoman Ellen.
I also went to the charrette meeting, I liked it, I liked that the audience could kind of take accountability for their own thoughts and opinions and see that of everyone else in the room too, I thought that was really great. So it wasn't happening in a vacuum. I also, um, went to the Westmarsh Executive Board meeting that was last week, so I'm getting involved there. I attended the Buckeye, it was Saturday this weekend, um, they had a legislative day, so I attended that. And I will be participating in the Litchfield Park one-mile fun run this weekend. I know. There we go, so hopefully I'll see you.
We'll be out there cheering you on.
Okay. It's the fun run, it's not the competitive, so support.
Is there such a thing as a fun one? I don't see how those two words go together, but.
Rhyme.
They rhyme?
That's it.
Okay.
Oh, and then I'm also looking forward to the, uh, the festival that's coming up on March first, it'll be exciting.
All right, Councilwoman James.
Um, I just, to your, your point, Lisa, Randy, I'd be happy to help put you in contact with the demographic. That's, I, I did kind of my own internal polling when we had our library meeting, so I can be happy to help. And I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Allen for collaborating, she agreed to poll both my weight and hers for all of the functions, so thank you.
Councilwoman?
Uh, I attended the trout derby, um, it's always put on, it's an excellent event. Uh, I'm not originally from Litchfield Park, however, there are many generations that have done the trout every year after year. Um, wherever you got the fish from this year, bring them in next year, because they were very hungry and they were borderline salmon.
Yeah.
They, they were some of the biggest trout I've ever seen, so I think everybody had a great time, so thanks to the Parks and Rec Department for putting that on. See, uh, the, I don't, I've not heard it mentioned, but the, the Parks and Rec leagues that we have here in the city are really important. Basketball just finished, my kids participate, um, we're leading into soccer. Uh, I greatly appreciate it, I know a lot of young parents do as well, who have kids, soccer Saturdays are probably my favorite Saturdays in the field, um, so thank you.
You, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I represented the city at the Chamber of Commerce, Social in January. I was at that, what's that word, charrette, whatever you call that word is, the meeting at the church, yeah, it's our new word that we all learned from our city planner. And I complimented you the way that it was run. Uh, there was no opportunity for anybody to be, they, they could give their input, but they couldn't complain. I mean, it was, you know, with the computer program and stuff, the way you ran it, it was phenomenal, absolutely, it was very phenomenal. A lot of good useful information came out of it. Uh, we had the dinner for, uh, former councilmen, Romack and Donahue, uh, that we were at, that was a, a nice, nice event. Saying, going away to them, I walked around the trout derby, and I was also amazed at the size of the fish. They were as big as some of the kids, actually, we were trying to carry them, you know, with two hands lugging them around. Uh, I was at the February sixth design review meeting, uh, checked out the Wigwam Fine Arts Festival last weekend. See what was going on over there, and I was at the airshow also, I convinced you there, I was there with, uh, with the mayor's invite, invited us to come. Uh, it's a great, great event, very well event, uh, sponsored by, uh, the National AOPA Airplane Owners and Pilots Association, so. It is, it's a, it's a big, big event for the area. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Uh, I already told you about the meeting that we had with, uh, Sun Health and Joel Roux. Uh, we also met with the architect for the library. I think we've come to a meeting of minds that it is possible to build a, a shell for less than five billion dollars, and I in fact, to build a complete library with TIs for four point five or less, so we've made some real progress. We have entered into the contract to get them started on their design, so that's moving forward. Okay, um, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Mayor and Councilor, my report's in your packet, I welcome any questions if you have any.
Questions for the city manager? Okay, seeing none, uh, brings us to this meeting's called the community, we have one request to speak by Judge Craig Ring. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to the council on an on-agenda item. You're generally limited to three minutes. For yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And so I noticed on the agenda for the executive session, it's vaguely listed as an IGA with Avondale. So I'm assuming that regards the proposal to outsource the city court to the city of Avondale. If I'm correct about that, I'll continue, if it's a different IGA, please tell me and I have to stop. So I'm assuming that's, uh, that's what it's about. So, Mr. Mayor, when you first mentioned this topic to me, you invited me to think about it for a while and then tell you why this is a bad idea, why not to do it? So I'm here today to tell you that. And there are seven distinct reasons why I believe this is a poor idea. Number one, it would be client convenience, so any resident of Litchfield Park, um, is at least a twenty-minute drive to the city court in Avondale. And that's if Dyser and Litchfield Road are both in normal condition and not under construction. As you all probably know, in the last five years, several of those have been under construction. If that's the case, it's a much longer distance. Number two, Avondale Court works on a four-ten system, four days a week, ten hours a day, they are closed on Fridays. This would be very inconvenient for people, as a lot of people also are on four-tens and use Fridays to do their court business. It's one of our busiest days, and people are also paid normally on Fridays. So when they make a payment plan, most of their payments come in and either mail in or come in in person or call with a credit card over the phone on Fridays. They would not have that ability to do so anymore under the Avondale system. And it would also hamper and cause havoc with existing payment plans that are already set up months in advance to make those payments on Fridays in accordance with people's pay schedules. Number three, customer service. So if our court gets an inquiry about a case with our court and our, and, uh, our court administrator is present that day, there is an answer the very same day. With Avondale, and I have an example here, in case you want to see it, as proof, that in Avondale, you get a note back that says, and let me take a moment here to give it to you precisely. Hello, in order for the court to continue to process this request, please provide your full name, date of birth, mailing address and telephone number. All information must be provided. All information must be provided for processing. Please note that all requests can take up seven to 10 business days to receive a spot response. With our court, same-day response. So customer service would suffer. Uh, also, costs. So there's been some figures bandied about. This might save the city some money, some money. But I think there's a few things that have been not considered with these costs. Number one, there's no, uh, provision for the public defender and how much that would cost. And this is a variable cost. You never know how many cases are going to fall under the purview of the public defender. But I will tell you that our volume has been going up dramatically in the last six months, and so the public defender cost is increasing. Number two, if this move takes place, it's going to require a whole new printing of forms. We use a lot of different forms for the court. They all have the court's office address and phone number. If it goes to Avondale, all those forms would have to be reprinted. They're usually on what I call NCR paper. I'm not sure if that's the current term, but anyway, the three section, three pages, if you press on it, it goes through to all three pages. They're color-coded, the original for the court, one copy for the defendant, one copy for the prosecutor. Those are expensive forms. You're going to have to redo all of the forms. Number five, loss of local control. What if the Avondale judge, for any reason at all, pick a reason, decides after a while, he doesn't want to do it anymore? Then what is the city going to do? You've lost all leverage. At that point, it's much more difficult to create a court out of nothing than to continue with an existing court. Also, I have heard that one of the reasons promoting this idea is for storage. That there is a desire to move out of the storage trailer in the back of city hall where the court keeps its archives. Well, this should not be a problem. We're not, you know, joined to that storage trailer. We can find storage all over the place. There's, if you've been driving around, storage centers are popping up, you know, like flies everywhere around the city, so we could easily move our, our archives to some other storage facility. That would not be a big problem to help, uh, remove that trailer. Finally, history of the court. Especially since we have two north council members. You may not be aware of this, but in 2004, that my predecessor received an operational review from AOC. That's the, uh, Office of Administrative Office, the courts, and they review everything about court about every 10 years or so. Every, very comprehensive, that's where everything. At that time, the city judge at that time had over 20-some major violations. We're not talking small things. We're talking major violations. At that point, I was encouraged by the city manager to apply for the position. I said, well, first I need to take a look to see what I might be getting into, and I watched the session of the court. With my own eyes, I saw this judge blatantly doing illegal things. Finding people guilty of things that were not a crime. And thought, oh, this needs help. So fortunately, I applied. City Council appointed me to the position. And when we had our next operational review in 2015, there were zero major violations. None. We corrected everything. And you may not know that we are very highly regulated, uh, business. And every 10 years approximately, AOC does a comprehensive audit. Every three years, we have our triennial audit, which is mainly financial, and we just completed one here in 2004 with no irregularities. It's the accounting term for any violation whatsoever. Zero. Every year, we go through a minimum accounting standards, and again, we did this year, of course, did not have any violations. So we are frequently audited, frequently gone through. There has never been a financial problem. There has never been a complaint with Judicial Conduct Commission. Our court is professionally run and has that, been that way for a number of years. So I hope you take that into consideration. Those are the major issues that I see and hope you consider that when you go through your deliberations. Thank you for your time.
You, you have, have you submitted those comments in writing just since I didn't have, I don't have them?
I have submitted my chicken scratch notes that would probably be difficult to decipher, but.
It would be, if you would put them in writing, it would be good for the city manager to include that in.
I can do that.
Charles, he's got it.
Yes. And if you want me to stick around for the executive session, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's going to be something in the executive session that's going to require a question. If it does, we're not going to take any action. All we know, we've been having a presentation from council and that's, and we'll, we'll see what we do after that.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we have one more request to speak to the, in the call to the community. That's Mr. Solich.
Adrian. I'm sure you, you know me because I've met with you numerous times. Uh, I've lived in a park for 40 years, 20 years in, actually in a park, 20 years over in Litchfield Greens. Okay, and I'm looking at phase one, phase two, phase three. I've met with, uh, with Matthew probably 20 times. I don't know if you're aware how bad camelback traffic, pollution, and noise has become. Okay, we tried to stop the trucks. Governor Hobbs overrode that and it's unhealthy. I mean, it, you're, you're looking at people that are going to get tinnitus. They're going to get lung cancer. All you have is diesel, old diesel vehicles that are polluting right over the small wall that we have in the greens. And my grandkids won't even come over because they're afraid they're going to get cancer, et cetera, et cetera. But my question is, why isn't the city doing anything about that? We've had the land up in the hill. My, my, my kids remember seeing the, the peacocks and stuff. We've, we've owned that land forever. Why has that become such a priority over the health and safety of, of, of our citizens? That, that, I don't understand that. Has anybody ever gone out to the camelback and counted the amount of trucks? You've got 500 trucks a day going, at least, from three o'clock in the morning. They're doing it right now. But unless you're out there and you observe it, you don't understand that, I guess, because the city attempted to stop them and then we rolled over. So my question is, are we going to actually do anything in the roundabouts? Sure, they'll help a little bit, but they're not going to stop the trucks. Okay, you, you, as long as they're building out to the west, the trucks will continue, the gravel trucks, the cement trucks, anything to build will be going back and forth. So is the council actually concerned about that at all? I mean, it doesn't affect the actual square so much unless the people have it bordering camelback on the north side of, of actual Litchfield Park. But you've got Litchfield Greens, you've got the phases there just past the, the ballpark and, and something's going to happen. I don't know, but you, you, you're talking about people that are going to be getting sick and, uh, having some respiratory problems, et cetera. Are we concerned with that? I mean, we've talked about it, Vice Mayor Fitz, so have you and everybody else, but we really, it doesn't seem like we really care anymore about our citizens who, who live here. That's my impression. Like I said, I've been, it'll be 40 years this year that I've been here, so I, I, I'm just very, 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 um, you know, sad that we're letting this happen and we're not stopping it. I mean, that's, that to me, we're, 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 we're now a, a, a city that can enforce it, but we're rolling over. And, you know, we're afraid Governor Hobbs is going to squash us again. Well, guess what? She's got two years and she's going to be toast. Because this, 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 this state can't put up with the mentality that's going on. It's horrible. So we'll see, but are we concerned about that?
Sir, you've, you've asked a number of questions, but the council can't respond during the call of the public. They can't engage, so you've asked a lot of questions.
Okay, disregard my questions.
But you can direct those to the city manager and he can get with you that information that you're asking for because he has it.
Okay, why don't you all go out and listen to the traffic and breathe the, the air? How about that? I'm, I'm not asking oppression. I'm saying go out there and lead, be a leader.
So I, I have just a question to the, to the city attorney. We, we cannot respond to your questions.
Okay.
Because you're not on, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
We have open meeting law issues.
Okay.
Except you call the council or any individual in the council, if you call us into question in our motives and our, and what we're doing, that we're doing, that we're basically, you're casting aspersions on us.
I think you said that and I want to respond.
Yes, you can respond to criticisms. Okay, I'm going to respond to your criticism because I think it's totally, totally unfair. And I understand that you live over there and that you have a very, um, personal reason that this is very, very important to you. But you and I have talked probably more than hour, more than hours, multiple hours. And I have expressed to you how much I care and how much this council cares about all of the citizens that live along, uh, Camelback Road. We have spent tens and probably close, closer to hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to get into a position to enforce truck ban. And we have problems with that. And it's whether you like it or you don't like it. We have a state law to deal with. We have a state legislature that is made up of people who want to enforce this ban. Changing the governor is not going to change that. The governor is also going to try to enforce this ban. So as we have, just let me, I'm going to finish responding to your criticism and then we're going to be done.
Okay.
Because we've heard everything you've said, we have heard multiple times in public and in private. And I think it's unfair for you to, to act like we don't care. Because we know, just, just a second. You did say that.
No.
We were not concerned. I have been on Camelback Road. I have hired engineers to go on the Camelback Road. We have done all kinds of things to try to figure out this problem. Part of this capital improvement process that we're going through involves doing mitigation along, along the walls that will infect you, affect everybody there. But it, it is not a complete answer, but we are doing our best to try to get the best answer we can, the best combination of things that will give us the best result for the citizens that live along Camelback. You can, you can believe that we do our, that we make that, we make bad judgments, but don't ascribe to the fact that we don't want to help you because we have, we have stepped up for multiple years trying to help.
Yes, I have the paperwork. I know that. I, I've been here, okay? We are a charter city. Why don't we act like it? Why don't we enforce like we do?
Because I, I, the question is, do we want to spend $2 or $3 million of all citizens' money to impact
Okay.
20 people who live on Camelback?
See.
And have it probably fail? Have it probably fail. We have been advised by our, our legal people, by lobbyists who deal with this every day down at the legislature, that we can spend this money and we have some good arguments, but chances are at the end of the day, it will fail because the state legislature can rewrite the law. So what happens? We fail. We've spent huge amounts of money and we've gotten nowhere. That's the dilemma we have, whether you like it or not. That is our dilemma.
Okay, how was the Goodyear getting portioned?
Goodyear did it before the state legislation and the state legislation does not apply to Goodyear.
Well.
Uh, you say, yeah, well, okay, guess what? We didn't have jurisdiction of Camelback at that time. So we couldn't, we couldn't, and our, our truck ban goes back probably further than Goodyear's, but it didn't apply to, to Camelback Road because Camelback Road was not in the city.
Right, you applied part of it. You did that intentionally to stop this.
That was the con, that's the rea, that was part of the reason, yes.
Yeah, so basically, we, we haven't accomplished anything.
We have not, we, we have not accomplished everything, anything. You're correct.
Okay.
We still have the trucks.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that we don't care about it. It doesn't mean we haven't tried to copy something, but have we changed it today? No.
Well, okay, we got phase one, two, and three, and we've had that land for 30 years. And we haven't done anything, but now it's become critical to get that done.
In part, in part because we have a problem with trucks on Camelback. In part, that is one of the things that drives this improvement project is that we have got, we need to do some things to make Camelback better, to try to make it better for our residents. So that is part of the driving force for what you're seeing in this, in this presentation on infrastructure. Okay? Are we going to come out and say, well, we're going to do this and hopefully it will, it will make it so that the trucks won't ever want to be here? Well, we can't say that. That's a dumb thing for the council to say.
Okay, well, we, we did it back in 2022 and then we rolled over.
We got slapped down. We didn't roll over.
Well.
It's a reality of life.
Okay.
Some people have a bigger stick than you do.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for, for your time and attention to the matter, Joe. As you know, I always enjoy talking to you.
Saying that you're not going to, I'm just saying that it's not in the citizen's just interest to allow the trucks to pollute and, and the noise, the decibel level's 100 decibels.
And nobody up here disagrees with you. Nobody up here disagrees with you. We all agree that it's not in our best interest. Absolutely. But that doesn't mean we can change it.
Point your efforts at the legislature. That's our problem.
Talk, talk to your representative, Montenegro, someone who sponsored this stuff. Again, those, they're the people who have the ability to do something about this, Joe.
Well, you and I both know that. You stopped us in that.
Well, I may get into that, but that's where your, that's where your ire should be is with, is with your state legislators.
Takes us hard.
Okay, we're done for tonight. Thank you. Can't go down that path. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. All right, this takes us up to what? I've lost track. Presentations. So we have a presentation from the PW Litchfield Heritage Center. Mr. Judy Cook.
Thank you.
As a former teacher, I had to hand out a few things because teachers always have to pass things out. Um, my name is Judy Cook. I am the president of the Litchfield Park or the Paul Litchfield Heritage Center. I still get that confused. I do know my name though. Um, I thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. Um, the reason that I wanted to speak to you was to bring you up on, up to date on the project of the Heritage Center and also to speak to the four new members who weren't on the council when the project started. So if the three of you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Lisa, if you'll bear with me, I'm going to give them a little bit of history of how this all came about. So back in 2017, the then Litchfield Park Historical Society was offered a challenge grant of $1 million to repurpose the, uh, Litchfield Denny Historic Home at the top of the hill. Um, the challenge grant required that we go out and raise a matching million. So we accepted that. The city was excited about it. And we, at that point, went out and did extensive RFPs and an interviewing process and hired Orket Wilson Architects to come up with, uh, the concept design and Walt's Construction to come up with an estimated budget for it. You are seeing the old donor packet and you will see the old donor packet has an estimated budget of 3.5 million. At that point, that money was to cover not only the cost of the building, but then what we understood that we would have to get a road and parking lot onto the property as well because there wasn't anything there that gave access to the building. In going through that, then, uh, Orket Wilson continued with the plans till they were about 80 or 90% finished while we started the capital campaign. We began the capital campaign in the spring of 2019. That was a long seven years ago. That's seven years ago this spring. We thought at the time, because the money was coming in very quickly, that at the end of 2020, we would have the full 3.5 million. But we all know what happened in March of 2020. COVID hit. We not only had to stop the capital campaign, but we had to close down the museum for close to a year. So that really halted things. The donor package that we developed, you will notice, has a booklet in it. That is a booklet that we are going to have to redesign as well as the donor packet moving forward, so I'll explain that to you in a minute. We got a lot of donations in from people who were out of the area, which surprised us. I think you will be surprised that over 40% of our donations came from outside of Litchfield Park and outside of the state. So the fact that Paul So the fact that Paul Litchfield was so well-known and respected, I think speaks well to the promise of um the museum in the future. We even got a donation from the Boswell Foundation in California. They are underwriting one of the galleries and their name will go on the gallery. At that point, toward the end of twenty nineteen, when the Capitol Campaign was rolling along quickly, we did two things which you need to know about because you may want to pick up on them in the future. John Donahue and I went and spoke to the executive director at the Botanical Garden, at the Phoenix Botanical Garden, letting him know what we were doing out here, hoping that perhaps they would agree to do a satellite botanical garden out in this area. A lot of cultural facilities will do outreach programs where there will be satellite endeavors to underserve communities. Um, the Phoenix Symphony has come out here and performed up in Australia. That's part of their outreach program, as is the Phoenix Ballet. And the Herd Museum even had a small museum up in the Sun City area prior to Covid as part of a satellite program. We never pursued that because Covid interfered with it. The second thing we did was we talked to Tom O'Malley, who then worked for JDM. He no longer works there now. He works for um Can't think of the group.
He's retired.
Public Greek group. Um, he came out and he was very, very excited about the promise of that hilltop for this reason. Um, the Wigwam and JDM Partners owned that Sunset Point Hill that they have since sold. And it, they were unable to use it. Not only did they not have horses to get up to the top of the hill, it required a lot of generators to get up there and was just getting very inconvenient and a problem for them. And they like to have sites off-site for the people who come to the Wigwam. So I think that the possibility of renting out the high hill or what you're calling the bandstand area, our terrace, our south terrace, and eventually our sent, assembly room will be strong in the future. I'm hoping that still is the case with the Wigwam, but I think that's worth investigating. So that's something you should be aware of because that will fall in your hands. Okay, so we had kind of a nightmare after Covid, which you all know because you're going through the downtown center. Uh, not only did we have Covid, then we all have been enjoying inflation. Um, we attempted to reboot the Capitol Campaign after we were able to open the museum. We held three cocktail parties, which were somewhat successful in that we were able to raise between about two hundred to three hundred thousand from those three parties, which was helpful, but we were meeting a lot of resistance because of inflation. At that point, we um decided to go ahead and apply to the Piper Foundation. The Piper Foundation uh is a very important foundation in Maricopa County. And we were quite successful in that we got about halfway through that when we realized that we couldn't meet the requirement of the seventy-five percent for the Capitol Campaign because inflation had made the prices increase. So then we had to rethink, what can we do with the project? And of course, in the meantime, the city was working with the downtown area. We were told that you wanted to do the downtown area before you did the hilltop. You were trying to work out an agreement with Sun Health, which didn't materialize. And things were just not moving along until finally the library came into the picture. So then we had to think, what could we do with our money? Because there was a time there when we were getting very uncomfortable holding that money. And our Capitol Campaign Committee was urging us that we needed to let our donors know and perhaps offer to give that money back. Seven years is a long time to hold Capitol Campaign money. You only have about a two-year window with raising Capitol Campaign money. So this became problematic. Fortunately, we did not do that. We kept the money and we decided that we could do um a repurposing of the top floor of that house. The house is really quite beautiful on the outside, but the inside is an absolute rabbit worn, unfit for public use and needs a lot of work on it. However, the exterior is quite lovely. The family was interested in keeping the exterior intact so that when you look at that building from the outside, it still looks the way it did when the Denny's um lived there. So um most of our donations came in to cover that top floor, that third floor, which is most of the exhibits. It covered most of the galleries. We only have one gallery that isn't underwritten, and as I mentioned, Boswell has underwritten one as well. And um all of the exhibits are underwritten for that top floor. So we thought that would be a good solution to it because it would please our donors. Our donors would finally feel some movement forward in the project. And that could restart phase two, which we need. Okay, we believe at the Heritage Center that there are three things that have kind of prevented our growth. One is the size of our building. Our building is very small. It's only a little over a thousand square feet. And if you get twenty-five to thirty people in there, it's quite crowded. The other thing is, we couldn't get buses up into our parking lot. If you have come up into our parking lot, there is a very steep bend at the top and it hits the undercarriage of buses. So this prevented us from getting school buses up there and tourist buses. We have not been able to advertise on the tourist register as yet. I'm keeping it short. Okay, so whenever buses came out here, I would have to get on the bus and I would have to travel around the Southwest Valley telling the history and not let them get into the building. The third thing is the storage area. We have probably um space equivalent to the size of our current museum filled with artifacts, filled with documents, filled with photographs. That makes access very, very difficult for us. So the bottom line to this is, if we feel we can get into that top floor and um we can open it up, we can get the magic number of sixty people into that building from school buses and tourist buses. I would like you to remember, I think it's very easy to forget, that when you live in Phoenix and you live in the state of Arizona, that we are a tourist destination. A large percentage of our visitors are not only well-educated people, but they're tourists. They're coming to learn the history. Litchfield Park and Goodyear, Avondale happen to be sitting on top of a boatload of incredibly important history. This history, we believe, is the most important history, the most significant in Maricopa County and probably one of the top ten in the state. Goodyear Farms, Goodyear Aircraft were the largest employer in the state during World War Two. It's an extremely significant thing. Then Litchfield Park has added to that the Newtown. It is one of two examples west of the Mississippi, the portion of the city included within those walls. That's an example of the Newtown movement. So that's a study for future architects and city planners, right there in outdoor museum. Okay, so that's where we were. Another complication came into being because it's just been a decade of surprises. So after Covid, Three Rivers Historical Society disbanded and we received all of their artifacts, all of their documents, all of their photographs. So now we are a regional museum. We are covering the cities of Avondale, Tolleson, Goodyear, and Litchfield Park and the smaller communities of Waddell and Cashin and Liberty. So it's important that we have a storied area where we can put all of those things, but that won't come until phase two. So when we decided that we felt we could go ahead with phase one, then Matthew presented me with the lease, which um thanks to Matthew and Lisa, we have been negotiating for, it seems like, light years. Um, but they were very gracious and we got through it. Um, there were things that needed to be done. We are not flush with money. We operate on a budget of less than a hundred thousand dollars a year, which is not a significant amount of money. And we need to let you know that our home tour will not be going forward this spring. We were not able to get any people who were willing to open up their homes to the public this year, not even one. That presents a reduction to our income of between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars this year, which is significant. So we have had to retool our money. So in looking at the lease, we wanted to make sure when we move forward that we're able to handle the overhead of that lease. You will be getting that lease tonight, where they've already gotten it? Not yet. Okay. Um the original lease had us taking over the overhead for both buildings as soon as I would sign that lease. We cannot afford that. So we negotiated it that we would not be taking that over until we began construction. So that when we begin construction, um we can take that on and it won't be too long a time before we can drop the current building that we're in. We're trying to time it carefully. Um, we want to be in on the tail end of your construction on the hilltop. While we could go ahead and do that construction now, we can't afford to sit up there for a year or two uh waiting for access to the building. We just can't do that. So understand that when you read the lease. The city agreed to take a look at the building in terms of termites and mold inspection. Um, we were very grateful for that. We did find out there was a significant amount of mold in the building. All of the things within the building, the cabinets, the um appliances, the furniture has all been pulled away. Um, baseboards have been pulled out so we could do that mold remediation, which the city paid for. We hired um a structural engineer to take a look at the building to make sure that there were no structural issues that would present a problem in the future. And it came out clean. Looks like it's going to be okay, but I can guarantee you that there will be surprises. There have been for the last decade. I have no doubt that there won't be more. Okay, um, we have signed the contract with Orket Wilson to complete the phase one plans. As soon as those plans are finished, then the um project will be going out to bid. And um we will be folding it into your chart of the way you're unfolding the hilltop so that we're toward the tail end of it. It will take about six to eight months to complete that construction. We will have one or two galleries that we will be able to complete by the time we open, but it's going to take longer to finish all of those galleries. Um, being a museum professional, um, it's always been the public opinion that exhibits magically appear on the wall when they take an awful lot of work to do. I don't know why that is. So um that said, we have tentatively scheduled the groundbreaking for next January, hoping that we'll open in the fall when the school and the library open. But that's subject to a little bit of change. One last thing you need to know about. Years ago, when Daryl Crossman was still city manager, we went up to look at the hilltop and the house to see if we could turn it into a museum. When we got into the building, we realized that uh you were in the danger of losing a lot of artifacts in the historical room. Um, that was left pretty much intact with furniture, with the mural, with paintings, books, uh all sorts of things in there, lamps, um leather things that were getting very stiff and hard. So uh I talked to Daryl about that and asked him if we could take all of those items out of there and store them in our own facility at our cost. And we have been doing that for probably twelve or thirteen years. Matthew has a complete inventory of those items, but you need to know that we have them in our care. They are in fireproof storage where there is no um insect infestate, infestation. Um, it's air-cooled so that it won't be hurt by the heat. And we were very grateful to have done that and thankful uh because of the vandalism that has been done. Preservation um is an expensive business. Those items that we have stored will not have to be preserved, but there are items in the historical room that we are going to have to take care of when we go up there and do the restoration. So that said, when you get the lease, I think you will understand that the city has nothing to lose by making us your tenant. Uh, the risk is on our side. We will do our very best to deliver on it. But um these are interesting times that we live in. There, as I said, will be surprises. So I hope you will bear with us as we go through that process. We have given you the uh Capitol Campaign packet because that will have to be redone for phase two. We have two people who are already starting to work on our Capitol Campaign. And that last page that you see in the booklet will have to be redone because they're gonna need a new group of advisors, a new group on the Capitol Pan, Campaign because my generation is about done. We're shifting down into a younger generation and they're gonna have to carry the torch forward. So do you have any questions or comments or anything you want to sling at me?
But just like Sam, so glad this is signed. And we're, we've got a signed lease, that's one.
I haven't signed it yet. You have to look at it first.
Okay. An agreement. How about we do it at that?
Yeah, the contract is signed. One last thing, the four of you who are new, I really want to make some time for you to come up to the museum and take a tour of it to understand the history. And when we get all of the material out of um the building, the house on the top of the hill, so you can walk through it, I do want you to go up there with us and take a look at it before construction starts. So you know what you're involved in and you have a picture of what that museum is going to look like. And the three of you can come too if you want. So, okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate.
I'm sorry I talked long.
All right.
Give me a microphone and I just go.
It happens.
Yeah.
I think it's that microphone that causes it. Thank you. All right. Next item is recognition of the National School Breakfast Week. Now, there's a proclamation in your pack and I'm not going to go through reading it. I would urge everyone in council, if you have any interest at all in children, you are welcome to come over during this week at the school. Uh, the, the chef loves to have you come and serve food to the kids and it is a spectacularly cool experience. So if you have time to do it, to any of the times when they're eating, which is pretty much all day long, they eat. Uh, if you let us know, I'll make sure Matthew or somebody else in staff gets ahold of this, of the chef and will make you, get you on the schedule. It is a spectacularly cool deal to do. Um, we also have employee of the quarter, which is one of the most important things we do. We have um the employee with us, I think, tonight. You can see her sitting over there. This is school lunch. You probably aren't, you don't need lunch, do you? So this, this is an employee that is voted by other employees, not management employees, but other buying employees as the most impactful employee in the organization for the quarter. And I can tell you that uh every time that I go to City Hall, she brings joy to my heart when she says hello. And, and even if I come in in a very bad mood and I really don't want to be there, she says something that'll make me think that, well, it's a good idea to be in City Hall right now. It's cool. So Allison, if you'll come up, we'll give you this award. Used to be I gave you a, gave the awardee a, oh, tunnel's full now. It's a short. I used to be able to give out credit cards, just to go buy something, but now you just get a day off. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our public safety reports. Good year, Fire Department. Who is it? It's here with us. Good to see you.
You as well. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to break the curse on this microphone tonight.
Once it gets a hold of you.
So uh for the month of uh January, we had seventy-eight calls for service. Uh, eighty-one of those were, eighty-one percent of those were EMS or sixty-three calls. Uh, at La Loma, we had thirteen and then at Las Cruces were uh seven. Um, almost all of those calls at those two facilities did result in a transport. I think there was one that was not transported. Um, but to note uh for the calls for service, we did have a house fire on the ninth. Uh, so a quick response by our crews knocked it down real quick. It was in the attic. Uh, from um plumber that was working in the attic. Uh, so they were able to limit the damage, but unfortunately the family did have to uh vacate the house while uh things were cleaned up there. So otherwise, uh, nothing else to report of significance. Uh, available for your questions?
Questions for council? Don't see, uh, thank you for your service. We appreciate it. You guys do a great job and glad that the house fire didn't. Glad that the house fire didn't result in everybody else's house.
Yes, fire. Agreed.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
And then with water in the fire hydrants, correct?
Money.
Good. That's, that's what we hear. We let, we'll let Liberty know. Okay, we have a nail police department, Avonville, Litchfield Park Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm Jonathan Martin. Personally, you're council members. Actually, they don't know me. It's very nice to meet you folks. I'll be presenting the. January's police report. Like Chief mentioned, we did have a house fire and the good thing is nobody was injured. Refer to that. I'm good if I respond very quickly to King or Sam. Our officers responded to 468 calls for service in Litchfield Park in the month of January. Majority of those calls were traffic stops. We had 155 traffic stops. So we'll give you a little bit comparison to 2023 to 2024 January. Seventy-five in 2023 and 155 in 2024. To be increased, we double those traffic stops. So we have, we are increasing our presence out on Camelback and on Litchfield Road. Some of the notable incidents. We did have a criminal damage at the Public Works Yards. Someone burgarized the yard and then broke into it. Thankfully, nothing was taken. No items were taken and we were unable to find out who did that burglary. So. We did have an accident at the roundabout, which was on January third. Individuals traveling southbound on Litchfield Road and failed to notice the big roundabout and looking away, crashed into it. That individual actually fled. Thank goodness for some citizens that were actually witnessed it and gave our officer to respond very quickly. Some pointers were followed and we were able to locate that individual and place him under arrest. He was impaired, surviving was, impairment was a factor to that, that accident. Chief did mention that he did have the fire on the ninth of January. Again, it was a, someone doing some work on the house and caught the house on fire. So. That's this, that was the main calls for service for January. Questions?
Questions from council. Vice Mayor.
We had no flock alerts. Is the system down or are you getting?
We had no positive flock alerts. Yes, sir. So no, it's working. I was surprised about that. I went back and double, triple checked to make sure it's accurate. It is working. We did have some park alerts in February so far, so.
Couple of questions. All the incidents at the roundabout have been southbound, have they not?
Majority of all of them. There might have been just a few northbound, but I would say ninety-five percent are southbound.
And then. One of the things I've noticed and had some, some citizens comment on is the. Photo enforcement. That is on DICER and citizens are asking about having that on either Camelback or Villanueva or any of the hotspots that we have. Is that an available?
That is something that City of Avonville, we actually went into a contract with the company. To have those removable photo radars. So we have one, currently right now, we have it. Just north, just south of Indian School going southbound. And we have one going northbound, just north of Encanto. And those are. Interesting. I believe that that.
I think, Mr. City Manager, we'd like to have you look into that program.
Yes, sir.
Whether it's something that would be appropriate, particularly for Camelback.
Yes, we'd be glad to.
I was also going to provide you the yearly statistics for 2024. So, and I'll give you a comparison to 2023 so we can kind of compare apples to apples. For 2024, we had a total of 3,000 officer-initiated calls for service, which means that's an officer out being proactive. Compared to 2023, we had 2,470. We had an increase of 21%. Officers initiated that day. Counted that a little bit in 2024 for citizen generated, we had 1,722 calls for service by citizens. Compared to 2023, we had 2,068. So you have a decrease in seventeen percent. We like to look at those numbers. If the citizens generated are down, we expect the officers to be more proactive, have more time to be available to do things. So those numbers are very, very good. So you'll have a total of an increase from 2024, I'm sorry, 2023 to 2024, officers initiated, increased 522 calls for service. Almost all those increases of calls for service are attributed to traffic stops. We increased our traffic stops from 2023. Nine hundred sixty-three to 2020, excuse me, twenty twenty-four to 1,476. It's a fifty-three percent increase. Which equates to 513 calls for service. So all those extra time that officers have available, they're being proactive. Traffic stops primarily on Camelback and on Litchfield Road periodically, some other side streets here or there. So those are very good numbers to see. Overall, if our crime is down compared to 2023, sixteen percent from 355 total offenses down to 299 total offenses. We like to see those numbers continue to drop like that. So we're going in the right direction. We had a couple of. Part two offenses that if you look at the percentage wise, it's kind of alarming because it says, if you look at weapons offenses, we went from one to four. With the 300% increase, but with those small numbers, the percentage obviously goes up. Those weapons offenses, one was a person accidentally discharged their firearm. They're handling it in their house. So we, he was charged with misconduct with a weapon. The two other incidents primarily of the increase were two minors that were in possession of a firearm. One was sixteen, one was nineteen. So they can't be in possession of firearms. So they were charged with minor possession of firearms. So those are the kind of stick out numbers that you see there. Overall, our crime stats are looking very, very good and they're trending in the right direction, which we like to see. Anybody have any questions?
Well, see, thank you for your service. Let all your guys know. We appreciate seeing them driving around our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Make everyone feel safer with you guys there.
We appreciate you. Thanks, sir.
Okay, brings us to the finance report. Peterson, do you have a report, boys?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have the finance report through January, which is fifty-nine percent of the fiscal year. Our local sales tax, January twenty-five over January twenty-four was up eleven percent. And then year over year, we were up three percent. Our construction sales tax is up sixty-two percent year over year. This month I did break out the grocery tax from retail, so you could see that specifically. It does make up about twenty-one percent of our. Sales tax excluding construction sales tax. Moving on to the general fund as a whole, our revenues were just over nine point five million or sixty-one percent of budget. Our total expenses were at seven point five million or fifty-eight percent of budget. So through the end of January, our revenues have exceeded expenses by just over two million. We did receive a $5 million contribution from Maricopa County that is specifically allocated for the library. And so that leaves our ending fund balance at the end of January at thirty point two million. Just something to keep in mind, obviously that five million will come out for the library, the three and a half million for Camelback Road and just those other projects that we discussed earlier. Brings us to our rec and special events. The detail is in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Council.
Thank you.
Did I completely report?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting for you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to a report from. Mr. Drosky on the contamination and plume update. We have anything to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The information is in your packet. If you have any questions.
Questions from council on either of the plumes. I don't see any. You're also going to give us a capital improvement projects update.
That information is also in your packet. We have a lot going on through capital projects. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to elaborate. Is there anything?
Questions from Council. Councilman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just the, basically what's happening this fiscal year is happening and everything else is pretty much punning now till next fiscal year, July first.
Councilman James, I, yeah, it's split the difference. There's a few projects that are still going to happen. We're looking at doing the ball. We're looking at doing a few other smaller projects. Camelback Park Parking Lot should happen. But yeah, I think we're moving quite a few of the larger projects to fiscal year. It's on, we're also putting a pause on the Herf Funds extra expenditures to make room for the spending limit, but we have. Projects lined up for payment match.
Anything else? Thank you for your updates.
Thank you.
Magistrate Court Report is in your packet, special, Mr. Mayor. Special project. We skipped right over special projects. I'm expecting, I saw him sitting there with those big eyes and he looked at me when I skipped over it. That was intentional.
Yep.
That sucks, but that's another. Mayor, good evening. Ready, Project Planning Director. I am happy to answer any questions on special projects in Litchfield Square or La Loma.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor. If you, if you mind giving council a little update on the Thomas project, or they had requested that before, a little brief update on the Thomas project.
Sure, thank you. Although not including your packet, the Thomas, some know as Pistago is the church. Somewhat church located at Old Litchfield Road and Indian School Road on the northeast corner. They are actively working on the inside of the building, mostly in the sanctuary building as far as retrofitting some bathrooms and doing some interior work. Their comprehensive sign program was approved at DRB earlier this month and they're looking to. Submit building permits in order to put out new signs on the building as well on, out on the street. Unless there's more that I'm not aware of. That is the extent of my knowledge.
How are they coming with all the different site improvements that are necessary before they open?
Mr. Mayor, we've had initial conversations with him, with his engineer. October, probably about October of last year. We, we have not heard or there has been no movement on the exterior or the site improvements since our initial conversations in October.
So he's got fences, he's got in and outs on, for traffic control.
Yes, so there, there are improvements along Villanueva, along. Old Litchfield Road as well as the site improvements and the adjacent wall between himself and the houses to the east.
So mostly about until they get those done, correct? What happens? Is that how it works?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The only tenants in there are the two churches.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman James.
You can probably answer this question. Is, uh. Nothing should come back to council regarding that project until way down the road, until when he's met everything. Built and then wait, because that second building that he's, that's pitched us on is that, is that the DA?
Councilman James, what you're talking about is, is phase two. So yes, sir, there's nothing to come back to council anytime soon. And the mayor was spot on that and staff is very aware of that, that no CFO will be issued until all the required site work is done.
CFO.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay.
Operator.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that completes a part of the agenda. We go on to the consent agenda. Item seven, A through B. Does anybody who wants to take anything off the consent agenda?
We'll go through.
Second. Would you favor please say aye. Consent agenda is about, next item is item eight, A for business item. This is a consideration of adoption ordinance twenty-five dash two eighty-seven on urban camping. Mr. Williams, you got a roof. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mayor and Council. This is the second reading of the urban camping ordinance. This is an ordinance that many other valley cities have been adopting over the last year since the recent Oregon case. Again, this defines as far as basically that people can't camp overnight in city parks, right of way, streets, medians, et cetera. This is what, this is exactly what that does. Again, this is directly modeled on what many other cities have done. Welcome any questions if there are any at this time.
Any questions from council? Not as their motion, the back ordinance twenty-five dash two eighty-seven on urban camping.
Summit.
Secretary. And for other discussions?
Do we have to roll call that?
Yes, Mayor, if we could do a roll call. We do have to do. Which our clerk was just about to remind you. And she does the roll call, so.
Councilmember Brandon Blotson.
Aye.
Councilmember Claire.
Aye.
Councilmember Fraser.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Aye.
Councilmember Allen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Faith.
Aye.
Mayor Show.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous.
All right, next item is introduction of ordinance twenty-five dash two eighty-nine on public improvement cost recovery.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This again is introduction. It was first reading, second reading would be on, on next council meeting if it moves forward. This item is based on an ordinance that Goodyear has. It's a cost recovery ordinance. There's a process of this, but basically what it does is it allows the city to go ahead and build infrastructure such as intersections, various things. And when the commercial property surrounding that intersection or what other infrastructure it may be. Then that commercial property owes their portion of the project back to the city. One thing about this is that even if it doesn't, even if that property doesn't get developed for 20 years from now, it's what we pay today, their portion. There is no CPI, there is no increase, there is no interest. It's a portion of what they paid today, what we paid today, if that makes sense. And of course, it's not a simple process. There's a public hearing that's required that has the city has to go through a process to do this. And the teeth in this, the, how we hold this is that the property, the commercial property development would not be allowed to access that infrastructure. Until that fee is paid, until there's agreement in place. This is something that more and more valley cities are doing because as you saw earlier in our, in our presentation. Speed of development, there's so much development happening in the valley that the cities are getting worried. We have to move ahead with these intersections. Because the traffic is coming before the surrounding commercial development is coming and we still have to build it. So this is what, what it allows that to do. Again, this is the first reading. It's much more complicated than that. There's a wide paragraph there that covers things that it would cover such as bridges, schools. Obviously, we're not building bridges in the schools, but it's just a very wide paragraph. The vice mayor brought the point of underpasses and we discussed that we could certainly add the word underpasses to that paragraph. It's no problem at all. That's very much a high level. It is a somewhat complicated ordinance due to what it does. But again, there is a process. We don't just go out and assess these fees. There's a process that has to go through again, public hearing, et cetera. If there's more specific questions, I would refer it to the city attorney because they get it somewhat complicated.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I scanned down for this. I didn't read it in detail, forgive me. Is there something in there that if we do spend money, we'll record a notice against that property so that a new landowner will know? That there's some money that may be claimed? No big surprises?
Yes, it, it requires or provides for a repayment. Agreement that gets recorded. It has a maximum of a ten-year period. And it's not just the city that is, is able to work off this. It's also if there's a development going in. And the adjacent properties aren't going to be developed out for a number of years, but they need that infrastructure and now they know that they can go in and. Develop out that infrastructure and then get repaid for the other properties proportionate shares. When those properties come online. So it allows for that and it's not just, you know, we focus on. A lot on intersections and lights and stuff, but it can also be sewer, water, infrastructure. A good example of this similar project, process that, that worked for us in Yuma was we had a commercial developer that had to go in and. His, his property was a mile and a half down through this development. He had to install a mile and a half of all the roadways, water, sewer infrastructure. And then had reimbursement agreements for all of those other properties that benefited from that infrastructure when they went to tie into that infrastructure. So this essentially just codifies it, puts, puts it out there as a, as a code requirement. And then there's also a public hearing process. So if the city is going to go forward and do it. Do some infrastructure in intersection. That the, the property owners that are going to be benefited are going to be put on notice. They're going to, they're going to have notice of these obligations and essentially it's. No more obligations than what they would have when they go to develop their property. It just allows whoever's going to do it first to be able to front that money and know that they're going to be reimbursed through, through the recording agreement. Doing, doing file or record that public. Results of the public hearing basically because there. results of the public hearing basically, because there, when you first put it in, if the city puts it in, there won't be anybody to have an agreement with. Potentially, so how, how does it, how's the amounts get communicated to the new property owner? We would still record a document that would detail out, although it wouldn't be, an agreement with some other uh, third party, it would be followed the same process, the same language, same information, so that when it's recorded, it details out what the other, what the obligations are for those other adjacent properties. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Those kind of agreements usually have a ten-year ending on them. Is that in here?
Yes.
So if we put in the Camelback around the valve, Sun Health, and they do nothing for ten years, they don't have to pay. Yes.
Yes. Well, I'm not, not saying they wouldn't have to pay it, they, they, they wouldn't be subject to that. That agreement can still require that reimbursement, but you, you typically need to have some type of of, of end date, whether that is ten years, fifteen years. And if the council's concerned about that, we can look at just changing everything that's in there, that, from ten years to fifteen years.
I've not read a lot of them, all the ones I've seen were ten years.
Right.
Is there, have you seen anything longer than that?
I haven't, and I, I would have to go back and look and see if there's any kind of.
I'd like to.
statutory issue?
When this comes back to us, I'd like to, if you could find that, it'd be nice if we could go out, if the ten year is, probably is. I know what.
And of course, on that particular intersection, the DA obligations that are already in place still stand, regardless of this document.
That's clear.
That was me, my question is, if we have a development agreement, will this supersede and add additional costs on top of the development agreement if we already have an existing development agreement?
No, the development agreement would control, and this, this code also acknowledges the, the potential of having that development agree.
But if, but if something happened to an development agreement, this would still, this would effectively be in place of that.
Yes.
And then secondarily, adjacent properties are, how, how far away from, in the case of an intersection, is it the immediacy of the intersection, is it, you know, there, there's a lot of variables in here that just blanket.
And it's typical with, when you're talking about a commercial intersection, uh, call it a, a street light, two million or a million dollars for a street light, you typically assess a quarter of that per corner. So the property owners on those corners are the property owners that are benefiting from that intersection, you typically don't see a single-family residential house.
So in, in, in that instance, let's use Camelback and Litchfield together, you have the Fry's center on one corner with a huge amount of square footage to disperse the, the cost amongst their group. Then on the southwest corner where the CBS and that center is, is significantly smaller, so they're assessed based on the, the footage that they have?
No, they're assessed on their, their, it's divided a quarter, a quarter, a quarter, a quarter. It's just, it's not based off of the size, yeah. It, it's not based off of the size of the commercial development, I mean, because you could ultimately, you could have a, you know, you could have a an intersection where you have a, a four hundred thousand square foot uh, mall or, or what have you, that that has a bigger financial capacity and across the street you could have a circle K. Um, but it's, it's the, the benefit, it's not based off of the proportionate uh, square footage or, because the use is gonna be the same. You're, you're gonna have a, a street light there regardless.
So just for rough instances, is the corner CBS because it's on the corner and it's the one property that's on the corner? Or does it include Litchfield Park Pool, which is not on the corner but in the same center? It been on the parcel, isn't it?
It, it would have been when that parcel was developed out, I'm not sure how that was.
It was based upon parcels?
Typically, for example, if, if Sun Health is obligated for that north, west corner, Fry's is obligated for the, uh, the northeast corner. You know, and then the, the development, however that development was with the CBS, I don't know if it was master planned and then broken into individual pieces or, or what it was, but it's typically whatever that, whatever that development is to that corner. We may have circumstances where, you know, the city goes into putting and in an intersection and you, uh, one section or one quarter of that intersection is a existing uh, subdivision, residential subdivision. There's no real way to go back and, you know, say villages, you've been in existence for twenty years and now we decided we're gonna put in a a, a street light here, you're gonna be obligated for that cost. So it's typically, it's assessed at the time of development and what causes the, the need for that infrastructure to be put in.
And there's some projects too that when they were built, there was already monies paid to the city. For example, when Fry's was built, there was money paid by, by Fry's to the city for the intersection, what we call Pando Denny. For Missouri, there was interest, there was money paid to the city from Sunset Terrace when Sunset Terrace was built, from the company that built it. Granted, that was a long time ago and those are smaller monies, it would cost a lot more than that to build it now, but they did pay in monies at that time.
So what a, what a number of cities use to cover these costs or impact fees. Uh, Litchfield Park doesn't have development impact fees, and those impact fees would cover things of, such as, you know, you calculate in the, the amount of traffic that that development's going to put onto the roads, how it's gonna impact police and fire, how it's gonna impact libraries. So those would all be components of an impact fee that would be collected at the time of development. Here, what we're trying to do is we're trying to say and put everybody on notice that you know, Litchfield Park, for the most part is, is built out, but there's gonna be, as was shown uh, earlier today, there's gonna be a number of uh, substantial public infrastructure improvements that are gonna be needed. We want to be able to have this in place so that if there is the ability to recover or, or uh, recover those costs from the city, or if a developer incurs those costs, they have the ability, the mechanism to get reimbursement from the other benefited uh, parties that are going to develop in the future.
Okay, this is just the reading, right?
Correct, yes. Further, do you have a question, Councilman?
Just a point of clarification, I believe the term is fifteen years in this, not ten.
Oh, really, okay.
It's already fifteen years. Perfect.
I'll double check it, it's full of one.
All right, any other questions about the introduction of this ordinance?
I do have one question.
That's one.
Why did we not do something like this when we were developing Litchfield Square? Was there a reason why this is coming up now as an ordinance? Because it seems to be specific to infrastructure, so I was curious.
Yes, ma'am, uh, that is a good question, it's, it's something we could have done. Um, I'll be honest, I, I, I found out about this ordinance from just a discussion with, with Goodyear staff.
Okay.
As far as where their assistant city managers, it's something they had recently put in place.
Thank you.
Good question.
All right, is there a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-five dash two eighty-nine on public improvement cost recovery?
So moved.
A second. Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, next item is uh, introduction ordinance twenty-five two ninety on allowable, allowable uses. allowable uses, which we were doing. As I recall.
Mayor, members of council, good evening, good, once again, Randy Procher, Planning Director. Yes, this is a uh, rehashing of sorts, we had a work-study session last month, I thank you all for uh, your attendance, uh, some of the things Judy mentioned as far as our new town movement were introduced as well in my presentation last month. So, a look at, we have four text amendments in progress, uh, signs has gone through uh, the city council introduction, that was late last year. Uh, tonight is the introduction on uses. You'll note that the landscaping and parking do not have a recommendation by planning zoning commission yet, I will uh, begin then first before doing an introduction with you, so you can see tonight's introduction on allowable uses, and then we hope to have the adoption hearing for both signs and uses next month. Again, as uh, discussed, this is somewhat of a staff initiative change for formatting and for clarity and uh, the other part of that is a development initiative change. Because we do have new interests on La Loma and within Litchfield Square that has necessitated some of these uh, changes to go forward. I'm not gonna dwell on this sort of stuff because it was discussed in detail last month, but just to uh, remind uh, council again, as far as, this is the alphabet soup in which we have to interpret the code as stated. That would be cleaned up to basically uh, tailor that down to um, industry standards and across the valleys permitted, conditionally permitted, temporarily permitted. Any of those other letters that means that there's additional standards, it's just noted with that hashtag uh, footnote. The other thing that was uh, a staff initiated request is to put that hyphen inside that table to make sure that people understand it's not interpretable, it's not permitted outright.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Have any community commercial in town?
Vice Mayor. Mini commercial. I'd have to think about that a little bit more clearly because I don't know if the Albertsons is a C, C or it is, falls in a different category. To my knowledge, the only districts that we do not use in the city today are patio home, which has never been used, or uh, medium-density multifamily, MFM, so I can't recall if it's the Albertsons or the Fry's that is the community center, or the commercial center, excuse me.
But my concern was, my question, I guess, is, I've got gas stations permitted right next to barber shops and beauty shops and u- uses that are kind of that are not very annoying churches, um, and maybe the gas station should be a conditional, maybe it's what I would want as opposed to being permitted.
Uh, Vice Mayor, that is something we can certainly look at. The, the intent of uh, this amendment uh, wasn't in order to look at everything necessarily, I do appreciate the feedback and can certainly do that as far as a future update. Uh, as uh, Mayor instructed me very clearly last month, there were some things I needed to get on and I'm getting on those as quickly as possible through this uh, introduction hearing in order to address uh, some of the shortcomings of the existing table as written.
So, if we're gonna move this forward, it sounds like we need to have a work-study on the table. So we can really think about whether we want some of these uses next to each other.
We can certainly do that.
The table is consistent with what it is today, though, correct?
Yeah, Mayor, and I, I apologize if I did not uh, state that very clearly to start with, there are a couple of things I'll note specifically in this presentation that we need to address immediately. There are a number of other items, I worked with Joe to make sure that there was an opportunity to address some of the things that just don't make sense in our city any longer, which I'll, I'll separate between a staff request and a development need in this conversation. Just a little before and after, this is not uh, something to dwell on, this is simply a formatting update, this is a staff request in order to just clearly illustrate what we're trying to say. You can see on the left, those footnotes are almost longer than the table themselves and trying to extrapolate and interpret that sort of situation is very difficult as we, you know, evolved over the years. The after is just to clean that up again, add the hyphens, add the correct footnotes and lettering accordingly. Again, this is a clarity issue, not a content change, not a use change, just for this slide. Allowable uses, this is one of the things, uh, Vice Mayor, maybe to your point, this is the residential section. The big changes are on the books today, single-family residential is not permitted in residential zoning districts, which is an obvious oversight, and we'd like to clean that up and put that in books. Schools is another one, this was a conversation, uh, essentially the school is a separate subdivision, a political subdivision of the state. A school will go where a school deemed fits. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we did address that however in this code update. The other thing, and this was again discussed last month, instead of all those different letters, it's just noted with a simple uh, footnote there with the hashtag. Uh, again, Vice Mayor, just to dwell a little bit more on the conversation we had. The gas station separation is a good comment, we can certainly look at it, we could best practices. There isn't a lot of opportunity to put more gas stations in and certainly, you know, there's been uh, some situations where gas stations have been removed in favor of retail centers instead. What we felt did not make sense and with Joe's blessing, arcades, fraternal and civic clubs, home businesses, temporary uses and manufactured structures, these are uh, legal-supported, staff-requested changes to the code to remove these. Fraternal civic clubs are just generally defined as community facilities, there isn't a need to separate. Uh, temporary uses is too vague, the state, the uses that are temporary in nature are now noted as that key on uh, the red line documents provided in the staff report. Home businesses was another one where uh, there was a lot of conversation last time about can we sell cars, I didn't hope, no, you cannot sell cars out of your home, uh, there is a very fine list, this is the entirety of that list for residential uses and you will not find used car sales in this list.
A zoning map would be helpful.
Uh, Vice Mayor, certainly, so uh, I don't know of any instance that of any home is not zone residential nor any commercial zone residential. The only uh, in-betweens we have, we call public facilities, it's a catch-all term. We use from the rec center, the elementary school, some of the churches, all are in that public facility zoning district.
We've got three different kinds of commercial zoning in here. One industrial. Be nice to know what the different residential were, I mean, commercial were, so we know what, what we're putting next to what.
Certainly, Vice Mayor, so uh, the, the simplest way to state it is the residential districts, I'll go back to increase in density. Residential state are one, are one fifteen, you start getting to smaller and smaller lot sizes, then you get into uh, condos and townhomes setting. For commercial, instead of density, think of it as intensity, you go from a very low-intensity neighborhood center, that's, you know, the pharmacies, dentists, barbers, that sort of thing, then you work into a regional settings like the Fry's, you know, it's a twenty thousand square foot building, now it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot.
I think, I think the interest would just be to take a look at our city a, as a whole and uh, color-code it so we can see exactly how the zoning has turned out, I mean, for the most part, we're done, but it'd be a good idea to take a look at, at which are the, which of these fits into which areas.
Certainly, I, I.
It's no surprise.
Yeah, no, no surprises, that's the city of the street, we're just Litchfield Park. Uh. Sorry, uh, it's in, I, I say it half joking but half in serious, it is my intent to open this book fully and really investigate uh, the shortcomings or the opportunities in order to look at the zoning code holistically in twenty-twenty-seven, until Litchfield Square and La Loma are up and running and that school's going. I simply do not have the staff capabilities at this time to do more than just these very surgical findings at this time.
And we, we're not, Joe, we're not worried about a Prop two oh seven claim with these changes? Well, they're not substantially changing the, we're not down zoning, no.
No, and just to reiterate, so uh, Prop two oh seven, two thousand eight said any uh, changes, the, the city initiates, even if you come into the city and request a rezone, if it changes your value of your land, the city is required to compensate. So none of these changes create a grandfathered situation, I think to answer your question. The uses that are being proposed to be removed, there aren't any arcades or game centers in residential zoning districts. Very similar in the uh, non-residential districts, something up ahead, I'll come back. You don't have, you know, wholesale propane dispensing in the city, so we aren't removing uses that exist today. These sorts of changes are affecting existing business.
Okay, so is there a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-five two ninety on allowable uses?
Double.
For a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, it's introduced, we have one more chance at this, one more fight at this end.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Give me a pretty colored map.
We're gonna bring a, a nice colored map, aren't we? Colored map next time.
I can't, on the next presentation, I was just gonna say.
Now, you don't need a colored map for this.
I, I do have maps, though, but I'll move on, this is item eight D of regular agenda, this is a mixed-use downtown building. Uh, the applicant is Tim Boyle, he's in a similar colored jacket in the second row, uh. Uh, the applicant is Tim Boyle, he's in a similar colored jacket in the second row, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Rudolph are sitting right next to me. Uh, they hope to, uh, be the owners of lots one and lot two in Litchfield Square. I should, uh, probably back up, this is a request to approve the preliminary designs of, uh, the parcels within Litchfield Square. The zoning is a CTR, which we now call Litchfield Square. Uh, the request is a three-story mixed use building, uh, containing retail office and restaurant uses. Including a rooftop patio and a freestanding ice cream shop building, I have, uh, subsequent slides that will show us in context. Uh, this preliminary design was presented to DRB, this is an instance where a project within Litchfield Square or within Agrothorism. La Loma, uh, is a recommendation by DRB and an approval by this council. The other part of this is, uh, this is really a first look, you can call like an introduction, like we did with our. Uh, text amendments, any feedback that you have, because DRB also has some feedback, will be incorporated by Tim. Tim has promised me he will return it within one week and we will have this at next month's meeting. It's on the record now, so I'm sorry. Again, just for context, uh, this is the, uh, northwest corner of Litchfield Square, Litchfield Road itself is directly. This is the, uh, DUI catcher, uh, that we installed, uh, as. Removed any, uh, you know, it's, I'm happy to replace rocks, uh, that they get. Uh, Luchana Drive is off screen to the north, what you cannot see is the underpass, the underpass. Uh, for the red courses, about right here, Luchana is about another one hundred and fifty feet, uh, further north off the screen. This is the initial, uh, plan that was discussed and presented to DRB, there's been, uh. Feedback along the way that has evolved this plan, again, this is the preliminary design, we're happy to take your feedback, you will still make a motion. And then we will come back with a final design at next month.
So the review they're going to do now is a preliminary review and it was a preliminary approval. Subject to a variety of conditions that have already been discussed and I think agreed to by the, by the owner. Um, but it will all, it will come back once all of these various discussions are incorporated into a final design, a final plan. So that we will see it one more time for a final approval, everybody understand. Mr. and Vice Mayor.
City Attorney, wake up. Stat brought to me a conflict of interest forum on this issue. Uh, Mike and Ellie Rudolph are good friends of mine and my neighbors, uh, we've had professional relationships. Uh, nothing ongoing now. I am told that they search the ACC and I'm a stat agent or maybe one or more of their entities, their LLCs or anything. So I have a conflict of interest.
You're a stat agent, but you're not, you're not paid for that. Not a stat agent of this, of this entity.
I don't know what this entity is, it's not mentioned in our packet anywhere, it's just got Mike and Ellie's personal name on it.
Is there a specific entity that's going to own this property?
Yeah. Uh, Rudolph family.
Do you want to know anything about that?
Excuse me?
Did I, do I know anything about that entity?
Uh, no, uh, that your son.
Okay, okay, so there's an LLC that is controlled by the law firm, that it's a stat agency, probably. Which is fake law statutory agents.
Yeah.
Inc. or something.
And your son's working that, and your son's part of it.
He probably, he formed that LLC, my part, my law partner.
Yeah, then I would say you, you declare conflict and, and recuse.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor will not participate in further in this item. Are there any questions from the council? About the item?
I will continue, I hope that's okay.
I'm sorry.
I will continue the conversation.
Certainly.
No, I'm sorry, uh, I've got some good trickery, I'll show you, it's, it's a whole thing. Uh, this is the landscape plan, landscape palette is, uh, consistent with Litchfield Square and, uh. The already established palette, the pavers will continue, it'll mesh, uh, the existing, it'll be, uh. Along the outskirts around the perimeter of the site. Going forward, it's a look at the elevations, we did receive feedback at the designer review board that there was, uh, not. A, uh, level of comfort or interest in a stacked stone element. You'll see the stacked stone element here on the screen in my, uh, James Bond highlighting, as well as over here is, well. Uh, the applicant is more than happy to address, uh, the desire to remove the stacked stone. But again, this is, uh, some of the feedback of, we've received so far that you can certainly weigh in as well. As we look, uh, to move this forward to a final design. This is a look at the back of the building, we're very thankful and we do have very good code language to ensure that there is no back of house. You know, metal doors, shamrock farms, no crates, none of that is here or is even possible in this situation. So what you're looking at is essentially where you'd be parking as you're looking at the back of the building, as the building fronts Village Parkway. The park, the center park will be to your left. Right now, there is a very, uh, heavily detailed wall, uh, that was being, uh, posed as an almost extension of the building. This has evolved and the need for that, uh, level of screening is no longer required, I'll show that in the next slide. And on the right-hand side, you can see the ice cream shop, the ice cream shop is a freestanding building, uh, right along the underpass, uh. And right off of, uh, La Loma Avenue. Here's a look at the site plan, uh, there's a couple of things to note, so, uh, based on conversations and feedback, this building. And this parking is being changed, the building is going to be shifted further west and this parking is going to be removed, so you have. Very clean sightlines into a building and not to a parking field. There is a quest to move, uh, the current curb line, that's what's shown in the dash line, right here and right here, further north. To line with this drive out, we think this is a good change, uh, there's a couple of clarifications we're going to do. And I'll show them to you on the screen, so this is the before. And the working image of the after. So what has changed is additional outdoor seating on the east side, uh, the curb is being. Uh, angled instead of catty wuss, I'll just say, with a new crosswalk feature. This may end up being, uh, the entry into a future parking garage here off La Loma Avenue. There is a opportunity to create golf cart parking for that underpass to come right here to the ice cream shop building. And also to create a spur so that we can have a public works yard, this is all being. Discussed and determined as part of the development, uh, agreement and the evolutions of these plans, so. Uh, what was shown to DRV and what was sought for feedback was the before. Since that time, this is the after, you were not necessarily approving this working drawing, I just want to show you. Uh, a sign of things to come in the next week when Tim resumes his plans. So as far as just our analysis goes, uh, this is exactly what we're looking for, this is, uh, we've, we've evolved this plan, I. Probably should have showed you the before and afters, but this is precisely, uh, what we're after and certainly we took a DRV's. Uh, information as well and will continue to evolve this plan, so. This is, uh, exactly again what we're trying to accomplish now. Because we're still at a preliminary stage, there is a substantial list of stipulations, when you see this again. Hopefully next month, this will be much reduced because this is essentially. Where we're directing these preliminary plans to become final plans. The only thing that has changed is sort of the staff report and my notes here is a modification to number three. It was requested by the DRB to remove the words outdoor rooftop from that third stipulation, so. As originally presented, it said the first and second floors of the building shall be no less than ten thousand square feet each. The third floor of the principal building shall be no less than four thousand sweet, four thousand square feet, excuse me. With an outdoor rooftop patio space, uh, DRB had requested to remove the words outdoor and rooftop. So that there is an opportunity to have that square footage, but not necessarily on the third story. There were some concerns with the adjacency of Luchana, uh, directly north. The rest of the conditions again outline, uh, what is in its current stage and what will be advanced. Like the curb modifications, uh, movement of the building, the reduction of parking, the addition of a loading space. Rooftop lighting, uh, to be shielded, especially at that height of, uh, an altitude or elevation. Eight and nine are just as you evolve into this site and all the things we need for civil plans as well as, uh, ten and eleven. So, uh, it's stated at the beginning, it's stated here at the last slide, it's a very long, uh, motion. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, is, if that is your motion to, uh, preliminarily approve the three-story mixed use building. For the one-story ice cream shop located on lots one and two of Litchfield Square, farthest corner of La Loma and Village Parkway. Subject to stipulations one through eleven as presented in the council package, so moved. For a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. The motion. Motion passes and there's been one abstention by the Vice Mayor. Okay, that completes our regular agenda, we are now, I have an executive session on the items nine, eight, three, D. Uh, is your motion going to executive session?
So moved.
For a second? And say after say it, it's going to get on the record, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to move into executive session. Bring the media back and work, as soon as the computer is ready, gets ready. Door is going to be open. So is there a motion to extend later session?
So moved.
Second.